I said him, he was a lot of people. They were in a hurry for it, they were crying, they were thirsty, thank God. And the opportunity, they were very proud of it. They were singing, they were singing. They were singing in the rain. They were singing in the rain, they were praying, hallelujah. Praise God, a lot of people. They were thirsty, they were praying. They were praying, 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 they were praying. Praise the Lord, hallelujah. They were praying, they were praying. They were praying, they were praying. Praise God, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. They were praying, they were praying. They were praying, they were praying. Praise God, hallelujah, hallelujah. They were praying, they were praying. 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 Hallelujah. They were praying, they were praying. 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 Praise the Lord, hallelujah. We give you glory, honor, praise, hallelujah. Thank you Jesus, thank you Lord. Thank you Jesus, thank you Lord, thank you Lord. They were singing in the rain, please come forward. Pray to them in the rain, hallelujah, thank you Lord Jesus. Thank you Jesus, thank you Lord, hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. The Lord is strong, 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 strong.
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. He is the Lord of the rain. 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 He is the Lord of the rain.
Happy the ceiling. Are there people who are happy? Happy people, they are giving praise. They are giving praise. They are giving praise. Are there people who are happy? Amen. As Pastor was speaking yesterday, we hear worship God. As he spoke, all of them stood up. And we are here to praise God, even if you don't feel it, no matter what our circumstances are. We are here to praise God, as Pastor said, all of them stood up, amen. Can we all stand up? And we're going to worship God, we're going to sing a couple of songs. We're going to declare that God is good. No matter what, all of them, suffer, all of them, all of them. Amen. Let's put our hands together and sing. Come, let's sing together tomorrow. Yes, Jesus, you are more than enough God, no matter what they go through. And pain, disease, no matter what, you are more than enough, and you are good God. We worship you, God. Let's just clap our hands and give Jesus a clap for him right now. Jesus, we worship you. Oh, you are worthy, God, and all praise, Jesus. Oh, we worship you, Jesus. Let's put our hands together. Sing it out loud, I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I worship, yeah, you are my friend. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. To worship you, God, have the worship for me. I will worship. I will worship. With all of my heart. With all of my heart. And I will praise you. I will praise you. With all of my strength. All my strength. And I will see you. I will see you. With all of my might. With all of my might. And I will follow. I will follow. All of your ways. All of them together, all of them together. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. All of them sing together, all of them together. I will bow down. I will bow down. Here you ask me. Here you ask me. I will serve you. I will serve you. Every day. You will give me. I will give you. I will give you. I still your soul. My eyes are your throne. And I will trust you. I will trust you. I will trust you. I will trust you. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. I will give you all my worship. I will give you all my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. You are all I long to worship. You are all I'm worthy of my praise. Yes, Jesus. Oh, thank you, Jesus. You are worthy, God. Oh, strong worshiping him today. Oh, come on, yes, you're strong worshiping him today. Oh, I'm about to pass the show. Jesus, we worship you. He give you everything on earth. Come on, strong worshiping this Sunday. Oh, we give him all the praise. Let's share his love with you all, praise. Oh, he has done so much. He has done so much for us, Jesus. He should be a worthy one. Oh, we worship you, God. He should be a worthy one. Oh, for you are worthy, Jesus. For you are worthy, Jesus. Oh, you are the King of kings, God. Oh, you are worthy, Jesus. Oh, you are worshipful, Jesus. Oh, we worship you, Jesus. All the blessings. Worship God, as the sun says, bless the Lord of my soul. Forget not all his benefits. Let's sustain him for all the things he's done in our lives. For all the goodness, for all the blessing in our lives. Let's not forget what he's done in our lives. Jesus, thank you, Father. For all the blessings. For all your blessings, God. Oh, Jesus, you are. On that day when my strength is failing, the end draws near and my time has come. Still my soul sing your praise unending. Ten thousand years and then forever. Bless the Lord, oh my soul. Oh, my soul. Worship his holy name. Sing like never before. Oh, my soul. Worship your holy name. Bless the Lord, oh my soul.
अवर्मचिरण्यत्योलन सेवराइज़्न तन्वेदवारणम् पुर्तिगिरीपाकर्तावसहायु आयते दुराधियें बत्यज्जु जुबीर नामस होद्री तन्विभाव कर्चु तारु तनेपोरे कुरु मुस्लिम सम्राय तिर्नु कर्तावरीकट्टु तियर उस्सहोद्रियागनु देवो अंकरिति कमिरा तरुवरिला गल्कितणु मगल प्रेसी तन्व बीएससी रसिकायु मगल प्रिंस चनाई साउंड इंजीनियरिंग प्रचरिज्जु बेलगाम प्रेमो कनाडिकिल स्थिरिज़ेरा सभैदर सीनर पासवर्ड तन्व प्रभुतिकनुड़ अपोर्तने कर्तावायकनु तकी कर्तारसुश्वशमाय देवो एरोवायकन कर्दु बोगुनु इन्दर रात्रि कर्तारदास नम्रमतिद्रायकने यदि देवतेसु दिखनु नमुगिर्मचिर करणबढिचकर तन्वदासरे स्वादिष्ट जय तन्वदास
I greet you all in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus this evening.
धनिनायश्विन धनिनामतुदिन किन्नाम तुप्पुस्ने अनर्थ यरारी कितु?
Again, I'm delighted to be here in the presence of the Lord.
कर्तावरी संघिति इन्दर रात्रि कार्माहिरपान कर्तावरी के सावराशनकाय यदि देवतेसु दिखनु
I'm very much excited the beautiful worshiping team here.
इन्दर रात्रि ओरिमचिर देवत्यारथिपान देव मुल्किया टीमनाय यदि देवतेसु दिखनु
And I was spiritually elevated as we were all worshiping the Lord.
नमुरिमचिर इन्दर रात्रि यार सुधु दुपोर आप पाविन इरिकितने देव अभिषेकतर वरिया
You have got a nice worshiping teams here.
इन्दर रात्रि दिनकै उर्देवत तमिनिकन्ना वर्षिति नाय यदि देवतेसु दिखनु
I thank the Lord for that team.
अदराय यदि देवतेसु दिखनु
Can't we give a clap offering to the Lord for this one feature?
देवो अंकरिति देवतेसु दिखनु
Worship and the word are the two integral part of the church.
उर्सभैदर एच्चमली प्रधानमय रंडकारिगला आराध्यरे तिरिवतरित्र प्रगोषण
When powerful worship and powerful word comes in our church.
नम्बल देवतेयारथिकमोरु देवत्र बजर नम्बल गर्ते के कर्दुरुपो
When the powerful worship and powerful word comes in our church.
अनिशक्तमाय आराध्यरे अनिशक्तमाय देव मेलनुमुक्त बिकिमो
Powerful church emerges in midst.
अबरे असर मतितिर शक्तिवल सभा उडलिकनु
When we come to the house of God, we do two things in our eyes.
देवसमये कर्दुरुपो रंडिकारिगल तम चेनु
We talk to God.
नम्बल देवतोड़ सुमसारिकु
And God talks to us.
देवनुड़ सुमसारिकु
When we are talking to God.
नम्बल देवतोड़ सुमसारिकु
That we call worship.
अबरे नम्बल आराध्यरे दुरिकु
When God is talking to us.
देवनुड़ सुमसारिकु
That we call it preaching from the word of God.
अबर नम्बल देवो जरिते पड़कमले देवत्र प्रगोषण
And when I give the exclusive time for these two important things in our eyes.
इरण्यकारिगल तुमेनी यार निवरु समयगल माचिकु
And I tell you the church starts growing in our eyes.
यस परे प्रे अवर्ण देवत्र न सभा वालरी अनिशक्तमाय देवनुमेसहाय
I'm a pastor for the last thirty years.
एन उप्पल वर्षमाय यार समास सुश्वश्व
And I am preaching several churches around.
यबरे समगल देव मेलनुसु सुश्व
And I have seen the churches growing.
यार समगल वालरु तक गणितु
And our churches going down.
समगल तारु तुम्बो यार
And I have seen the churches stagnant.
यार समगल ओरिये किन्नास यार गणितु
One thing I have learned from all these days.
इदि कुरल्ले यार पढिचु यात्र
And there is a powerful worship going on in the church.
उर्सक्तमाय आराध्यरे देवसमय गणितु
And the powerful word is coming in the church.
शक्तमाय देव मेलनुसु सुसारिकु
Church will grow!
अवर्ण देवत्र न सभा दिच्छमाय
And we need to give the important things, importance to these days.
इकारिगल यार निवरु दिच्छमाय प्राथारिक तलक
My name is Nuruddin Mughur Sahdada Sahdullah, my full name.
कतारदास निवरु तक पर्य नुरुद्दुल्ला
I was born in a Muslim family.
यार यादस्त किमाय मुस्लिम पुरुपति चेनिचु
I come from Belgium district which was in Maharashtra before now it is in Karnataka.
नुसमेत बेलगाम महाराष्ट्र आयुद्ध रिपोर्ट न कर्नाडिकिल
I come from a very arthorax Islamic family.
अवर्ण यादस्त किमाय उर्देव मुस्लिम पुरुपति यार कर्दु
When I was studying in a college.
यकोले यार पढिचु दुपो
There was no Maulana in our village.
तन्व आयुद्ध नाटिल अवर्ण पुल्ला आरुविल्ला आराध्यरे नर्त्व वर्मेटि इस्लामिक मध्यसे आरुविल्ला
You saying first person singularly, me I, I like that, okay, no problem. And when wife also is coming, you say my wife, oh, no problem, that's okay. Okay, I, I am happy, there is no problem for that. Alu, alu. The problem with me is I know Malayalam and I know little Malayalam.
कर्तारदास निवरु रास्तो जारे तरिक मलाल वर्या नगर वर्या
And there was no Maulana in our village.
नाटिल आरु मुल्लाबार आरुविल्ला
So therefore I was appointed a Maulana there.
अदर एन अवर्ण अवर्ण मोस्टल आराध्यरे तुम्ही अवर्य
And I used to give a public call for the prayer which is called Azam.
अजाम वर्णे पब्लिक आइटम हिलारे प्रार्थनिक मिनिशनिके आप प्रार्थना चलिया
And I used to lead the people in prayer.
जर्क कर्दुरुपो यार अवर्य प्रार्थना नहीं करु
I was a very religious man.
यार वर्य पत्ता अवर्य मिनिशन
I wanted to see our village mosque is coming powerfully as it is coming from another big village.
यनी आंग्रमायु मत्युर चिरिमली विलेजुन्न ई विलेज आराध्यरु तुम्डे इविरत्य मोस्क अनिशक्तमाय कुन्नु तुम्बो रुमरी आगरे
I come from a very poor family.
यार वर्य निर्थनायु पुरुपति तलक
The village people started loving me.
यार ई नाटिल एला जनमेने स्नहिक
All the Muslims used to love me very much.
अवर्ण जनमेला इस्लामिक जनमेला मेने स्नहिचु
There are two Islamic main festivals in Islam religion.
इस्लाम मलतिल रण्ड अलिप प्रधानमय उस्सम
There are Baqriid or Ramzan, Ramzan and Baqriid are two festivals.
अलिप प्रधानमय उस्सम बक्रीद रम्सान
On the month of Ramzan, I was, I was, I was preaching in, in Eka, that is one of the festival.
ई रम्सान समये यार निवरु लल्ल पली सुसारिचु
And you know that is a very important occasion.
अदर मली अवर्य प्राथारिक तलक उर्समय
Usually we call them Maulanas.
यार असमये तुम्मच्चे प्रासिकिर्मिक
But I was preaching there.
यनराम्दा अवर्ण पुसिंग यार आवसर
And after that, I was a small young boy at that time.
अदर यार युवा गए सहोद्र
I remember entire village came and started gardening me.
अदर वर्ण इश्वश्व आप प्रसंग करिया इश्वश्व नाटिल यार करिल्ला बन्ने एन बे पुष्ण
I wanted to grow in my, in my religion.
एन अवर्ण वर्णिवारी निकाय करु तो
As you have to put earlier that sound only, alright. I, I wanted to become a more religious man.
अधिक भीतम अधिकमात वर्णिवारी
And I joined Jamaat Islami.
जमात इस्लामी तुम्ही उर्व ऑर्गेनाइजेशन चेन
And I started working in that organization.
ऑर्गेनाइजेशन चेन यार प्रभुतिया तलक
Before that, I was in a group called Tablihi Jamat which goes house to house and starts calling the people Muslim of course who are not coming to the mosque enough in the prayer and all that.
तबलीक इस्लामी तुम्ही मच्चे संघित चेन भवन तुम्ही कर्दुपो आराध्यरे कुन्ने पली वर्य जीनुले कुटिकु वर्णिवारी लसरो
Likewise, I was growing in my life.
अदर यार निवरु अप्पी जीवन तलक वर्ण
Story is big and very short briefly, I would like to explain to you my testimony.
यार ई अरिमुस्श वर्ण चरिमा के भय अदुपो
I learned it up in Bangalore.
यार नाइरु वेती
And I was working with an organization called Jamaat Islami.
जमात इस्लामी तुम्ही संघित चेन यार प्रभुतिया
Jamaat Islami is one of the powerful political party in Pakistan today.
पाकिस्तानले भय शक्तमाय प्रभुतिके जमात इस्लामी तुम्ही उर्देव पॉटीक
Revival in Islam has started by a Maulana called Maulana Mohutdi who was the founder of Jamaat Islami.
जमात इस्लामी ने बेनावरु तुम्हों जवाति तान मोहम्मद स्ताविक पट्टन
Today, whenever you see the revival, revival is given to that, that, that man.
अदर मलिश दिवित्र वर्ण इन्दर इस्लामिक वर्ण पर्वित्र अप्पी न ओत
I joined that organization.
यार संघित चेन
I was working in a company.
यार कंपनी जो
And at the same time, I used to be a part of that organization all the time.
असमये इरिकितने समय तुम्ही ई स्तावन तुम्ही चेन यार प्रभुतिचु
Sunday, we had a long time of prayers because it was a holiday and people used to come and they got the time to spend there and we used to spend a lot of time together discussing prayer and all that.
यार आच्च समये तारा समये बिकितु उरिमचिर कर्दु उत्तिक समये अप्पी कारिग चर्च
We used to pray together.
उरिमचिर प्राथिकु
We used to discuss Quran together.
उरिमचिर कुराने उरिमचिर सम
She used to expound the Hattis together.
उरिमचिर चेन बहुमुखी तुडिशित निवरु विभक्षिक
Nineteen eighty Saddam Hussein was invading Kuwait.
आयते दुराधियें एम्बलिल सदनाम हुसैन इराक कुएं
There were more going on between Shia and Sunni.
अवर्ण शिया युत्त न युत्त न
Most of the people living in India are Sunni.
अवर्ण इंडियन पाक के अदित तुडुशन वर्य वाक्का सुनी
We belong to Sunni group.
यार न सुनी ग्रुप उड्ड
We used to pray every Sunday.
एल्ला समये उक्कणत
We used to get the magazine from Kuwait and all that.
कुएं तुम्ही नाइक्सिस
So many people are killed.
अवर्ण त्रिवर्य मारा पटु
And we used to pray for them.
अवर्य निको प्राथिकु
Oh Lord, grand paradise to these blessed martyrs who have given their lives in this holy war.
ई विष्णु युत्त न माइच्छु तुम्ही अदर अप्पी विष्णु अक्कण मेने यार प्राथिक
They die in Mahara.
यार एन मलिस न
They used to come like this.
यार चोटिगल न
Shia, Arab Shia people also may be praying like that.
शिया मुस्लिम सुमाकर तलक प्राथिक
Praying that let our people go to heaven.
अवर्ण प्रार्थना विल्गर्ने यार अक्कण सोन
Shias are killing Sunni.
शिया सुनी स्नेहुद्दु
Shia people who are dying for them, they are saints and those who are killed are kafir.
माइके तुम्हर विष्णु तुम्हारा याकु तुम्हर अवर्ण ने दोरी
And I used to think like this.
एन विष्णु बिचिर
Those people also may be thinking like that.
अवर्ण मिन्या पुरुर बिचिर दिखितु
Shia people also may be thinking like that.
अवर्ण शिया अक्कण मेने बिचिर
Then maybe also praying like that.
अवर्ण उर्दर प्राथिकु
Shout to say.
यार चोकिमचु पार
I uphold the concept of the holy war which is there in Islam religion.
इस्लाम मलतिल अविष्णु न युत्त न उच्च एन यार कांच पारिकु तुर्न
I did not try to war Islam.
एन इस्लामी न युत्त ताल्प
I used to go to Maulana, ask the question to the people.
यार मौलन तुम्ही चोरिचु ई चोटिगल चोरिचु
Then after a while, there are so many people, I am gone, I've been asking them the explanation about this holy war.
यार पदरु चोरिचु ई विष्णु युत्त न कुच्चे मिल्लु तुम्ही पर्य अदर मलिस न
There will be so many explanation about that.
अवर्ण ने कुच्चे पर्य समास
Still speaking, none of the explanation has got anything to do, so I can't share.
एन अदर मलिस आशिके उद्गमे उद्धत्र मेने बिचिर
I was not satisfied at all.
एन किरो ताकुर तुम्ही युत्त न
Believe me till the age of seventeen, I had never seen anybody, I have never heard that there was a religion called Christianity.
अदर यार वैस्वरी मार्क कृष्ट मदम एश्वर्या कुच्चे यार नु केन
I never knew that there was a religion called Christianity.
कृष्ट मदम न अदमोर यार केन
And that was the situation that I was born and grew up.
यार वर्ण तुम यार जिनके पट्टु वर्ण तुर साकित
And this is what I was growing.
यार एन वर्ण
Suddenly I landed up in a group of young boys who were Christians.
यार अवर्ण आगरे तुम्ही चरपका कृष्ट चरपका यार कर्दु
They do, I was sharing their room actually.
अवर्ण रुमले यार पार
And they were very good Christians.
अवर्ण चल्ले कृष्ट यार
And morning they used to pray.
अवर्ण पगल्कार प्राथिकु
And they used to put the idol of Jesus and lit the lamp and used to offer the prayer.
अवर्ण एश्वर्या पुरुपति अवर्य तीव्र वर्क
They helped very much financially also.
अवर्ण एन सामतिक मेने यार सहाय
Very good Christians.
यार लस्ना सहोद्र
But the problem with them was.
अवर्ण प्रश्न
Every evening they come drunk.
यदि एल्ला रात्रि अदिम मत्यु गुरुचु कर्दु
All four of them used to drink together in the room.
नार्मल रुम रुम मेने अदिमाय बत्यु
One was there.
यार अदर वर्ण
Who used to go for the prayer.
अदर अवर्ण अप्पी विष्णु तुम्ही प्राथिकु
And to make that person to evangelist used to come there.
अप्पी विष्णु कर्दु मेटी वर्णिवारी तुम्हारा कम
And they used to talk with that man and used to go.
अप्पी विष्णु कर्दु निवरु इश्वश्व ई वर्णिवारी
I remember one day I have asked these evangelists about this idol of Jesus Christ.
यार अश्वर्या कर्दु सुश्वश्व यार ई पदमे कुच्चे चोरिचु
Have you seen Jesus?
एश्वर्या निवरु कर्दु
Was the photo of Jesus like that?
एश्वर्या पिक्चर ने यार न
Because Islam doesn't believe in idolatry or photography on that.
कर्तारदास न इस्लाम मलतिल विक्रम विल्ला विक्रम
I started asking about the idol and the photo of Jesus.
एश्वर्या अप्पी चर्ने कुच्चे एश्वर्या पदमे कुच्चे चोरिचु
He had posted ultimately led me to know real and true Jesus.
आज चोरिमा एश्वर्या कुच्चे वास्तव मेने मलिस न एश्वर्या मेने साली पार
Many things happened there.
अदर इश्वश्व तलक
There was a young lady also staying close by my room.
यार तावसी तुम्ही अनित लारा मच्चे सहोद्र
She also used to shed about the love of Jesus Christ.
एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे तुम्हारा तारु सुसारिचु
And as the days go by, I was learning about Jesus Christ.
एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे यार तुर्न तुर्न मलिस न
And I was not able to understand some of the things that these evangelists were talking to me.
ई सुश्वश्व न पर्य पड़क
I could not digest the concept, Jesus is son of God.
एन के मलिस न विष्णु एश्वर्या देवत्र न पुत्र
How God can have a son?
एन एरिक एश्वर्या देवत्र न पुत्र
And it is something like a Hindu or Paganist concept, this is what was coming in my mind, I did not like this.
एन मलिस न चिन्ना ई अय्यन वर्णे उस्तांत पर्य अवर्ण न पर्य पर्य
In order to explain, they did their level best to explain my doubt on that.
एन समशेग उर्दी बार अवर्ण सुसारिचु
But I was not able to understand that.
एन के मलिस न
Finally, they brought a man who was Muslim, took him from Bengal.
बेस्ट बकार तुम्हे इस्लाम मलतिल विश्वास ने कृष्ट मलतिल यार उर्देव मिनिशन
He was doing his reading, he said he's in nineteen eighty, his name was Sirajuddin Ansai.
Sirajuddin Ansai तुम्हे अवर्ण विष्णु अवर्ण बैच विविनित के मच्चु
He comes and starts sharing to me about Jesus right from the Holy Quran.
कुराने तुम्हे एश्वर्या कुच्चे वर्ण शक्तमाय स्पष्टमाय ई मलिस न
He's saying that Jesus is born without father.
यार एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे एश्वर्या न
Jesus is called Al-Masih.
एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे अलमासी एरु कुरान
Jesus is called Ruhullah, spirit of Allah.
एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे रुहल्ला अल्लाह आप
He was here to hear and understand, see the things which ordinary people were not able to understand.
साहरा का मलिस न पत्ता तकारी एश्वर्या मलिस न
He has gone to heaven.
अवर्ण यार मलिस रुरित
And he is going to come back.
यार मलिस न
So many things from the Quran he spoke to me.
यार एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे कुरान तारा कर्दु
And after that, one thing started coming to my mind was there.
अदर इश्वश्व ने मलिस न
One lakh eighty-five thousand Allah Allah has sent into this world.
उर्लक्ष्ति एप्पत्ति एयार वाक्का रे अल्लाह लोग
All the prophets are coming to this world.
ई निवरु तिर्नु साय प्रवाह
No prophet is going to come, only Jesus is going to come back, why is that?
वेल उर्लक्ष्ति एप्पत्ति एयार वाक्का रे लोग एश्वर्या मात्र मर्ग
One lakh eighty-five thousand prophets Allah Allah has sent into this world.
यार उर्लक्ष्ति एप्पत्ति एयार प्रवाह लोग
Nobody is born without father, only Jesus is born, why is that?
अप्पी अल्लाह जिरिच्छ आरुविल्ला एश्वर्या वर्य
And there is one person who is standing in the middle of the history, dividing it into A D and B C and only Jesus is there, why is that?
एन अदर एश्वर्या मात्र मर्ग A D B C फ्रेंड तिरिचु वर्ण चरित्र त्रमात तुर्न चरित्र पुष्प
It's all customs where, you know, making me to think about Jesus.
एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे नी पार चोरिर
It's all making me to come to the knowledge of the Lord Jesus Christ.
एश्वर्या ने कुच्चे अनिवार्य मलिस न
I told you that I was in the Jamaat Islami, I did not like the concept of the holy war.
ई विष्णु युत्त न कुच्चे पड़क जमात इस्लाम यार तुम्हे मलिस न
They gave me Urdu Bible.
अवर्ण तुम्हे उर्दु बाइबल
I did not know English at that time.
ई क्या समये इंग्लिश
They were not able to understand Hindi, Kannada, Urdu or whatever language other than English.
अवर्ण इंग्लिश वर्य वर्य भाष
They gave me Urdu Bible.
अवर्ण तुम्हे उर्दु बाइबल
And they had not their Urdu Bible, all Samhs were there.
अवर्ण बाइबल वसान तुम्हे सब
And Samhs and the servant of the mount touched my heart.
अवर्ण सब एन देवत कतार गीत प्रमाश एन एन मलिस न
At that time, our situation was very pathetic situation.
अवर्ण तुम्हे साहुस्त वर्ण उत्तिक
I was suffering by a terrible sickness in my body.
एन शरीर तुम्हे वियाद
I had run away from my home because of certain problems.
चर्या अवस्था निवित ने अन्य विद्युत
I had discontinued my college studies.
एन कोलेज मिन्या वस्तु ने निर्त्त
Before I put down to Bangalore in Chitturthur there, I have done a good job and I lost that.
एन निर्जोली बार बैंगलोर नु पार जोली
Because of these things, I was in a messed up situation.
एन जीवन न वस्तु ने तक आकपाय उर्दर तक
And I used to read songs.
सब
At that time, I used to read, "I am in a mighty clay, he has lifted me up and he has put me on the rock."
यार वाच्च सब यार कुरिये चेंचिलानु अवर्ण अमरे करागेटी भार मेने न
And I used to read that.
यार वाच्च
They will be coming when the Lord will check my life.
यार चुचु कर्तावर नवसमये जीवन नवसे के माच
And as I started reading the servant of the mount.
एश्वर्या ने गीत प्रमाश ने वाच
I came in the servant of the mount, reading and the horses came like this.
Yes, गीत प्रमाश ने वाच अगर अप्नो को महबत करने वालों ही को महबत करोगे तो क्या जियाना करोगे? निगल निगल ई ने बात्र से ही चर्ने का जलूप
अगर अप्नो को सलाम करने वालों ही को सलाम करोगे तो क्या जियाना करोगे?
निगल 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 को सलूप इतरे बात्र सलूप
आम लोग बहन लोग ऐसे करते हैं
I prayed that night. I prayed from the Quran, the first chapter of the Quran. Quran, I'm going to say it. At that time, I was in a great confusion. I'm going to say it. Church or mosque. I'm going to say it. Christ is my brother and Muslims are my brothers. Islam is the right religion, but Christianity is the right religion. Islam is the right religion, Christ is the right religion. Allah is the right word of God, Quran is the right book of Islam. Allah is the right word of God, Quran is the right book of Islam. I was greatly confused. I'm going to say it. At that time, I prayed that night. I'm going to say it. I was having a fear, Lord, after the death of my life, I do not want to end up in my life somewhere in hell. I want to go to the paradise of the world. I'm going to say it. At the end of the day, I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. That night, I prayed from the Quran, so good passage. I'm going to say it. There is a passage in the Quran, says like this. Quran, I'm going to say it. Allah, you're the right one, Allah, you're the right one. Allah, you're the right one, Allah, you're the right one. I am the right one. I need one thing in my heart. I'm going to say it. God is one. They even believe in Allah. If God is one. They even believe in Allah. Pray to God also, shoot me one. They even believe in Allah. I started praying like this. I'm going to say it. God, show me your mercy. I'm going to say it. Remember that night, I started praying. I'm going to say it. After some time. I'm going to say it. Something cold river flowing in my mouth. I'm going to say it. All my doubts, all my, you know, confusing things were falling down as if the dry leaves were falling down. I'm going to say it. 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 Inner voice started coming and saying like this. I'm going to say it. Christ is the savior, Christ is the savior, Christ is the savior. That night, I gave my life. I'm going to say it. 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 I explained these things to the brothers who are sharing their gospel to me. I'm going to say it. They took me out, they, they, they took me back again. I'm going to say it. Oh, they started spending a lot, a lot of time. I'm going to say it. They're excited to see me that I'm saying the words like that. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. They made me to pray a sinner's prayer that night. I'm going to say it. I also need the consequences after I become a Christian. I also need that, yes. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. That night, I prayed like this. I'm going to say it. Oh, I am accepting you tonight. I'm going to say it. I will live for you. I'm going to say it. I will die for you. I'm going to say it. That conviction is continuing, he went to. I'm going to say it. It will continue till the last breath. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Jesus came in my life. I'm going to say it. All inner problem went away. I'm going to say it. I told you, I was in a great trouble. I'm going to say it. I used to hold the, hey, I'm a head, I'm a head, and I used to dash my head into the wall, and I used to scream, please, please, in my. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Because I was a troubled man. I'm going to say it. My evil sickness was. I'm going to say it. I left my house and ran away. I'm going to say it. I lost my good job. I'm going to say it. I disappeared in my college. I'm going to say it. I was a messed up man. I'm going to say it. River like peace came in my life. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. I accepted Jesus Christ. I'm going to say it. I landed up in Kerala. I'm going to say it. I used to sing that song. I'm going to say it. Samadhanu la de la anjabor, samadhanu la yeshi angha igelbando. I used to sing this song, we are singing this on peace, Jesus came with peace. Jesus came and gave peace. I'm going to say it. Story is big, I'm not talking long, all of the story. I'm going to say it. Peace came in my life. I'm going to say it. All the troubles went away. I'm going to say it. Inside trouble went away, outside troubles carried away. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Muslims came to know. Muslims, everybody came to know. I'm going to say it. That time, I have changed my room from Christian brothers to Muslim brothers. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. These Muslim brothers came to knew that, they knew that something wrong is happening to me. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. And I was not going to the namaz now. I'm going to say it. You know, namaz, Muslims have to offer five times namaz. I'm going to say it. There is a sixth namaz also. I'm going to say it. It's called namaz atahaj. I'm going to say it. It's not, one, one special, one of the special namaz it is. I'm going to say it. Midnight, we used to offer. I'm going to say it. We used to expect the great blessing from Allah. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Now, they are sensing something wrong has happened. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Between one incident happened, I would like to tell you. I'm going to say it. This is very, very normal incident for you when anybody hears this. I'm going to say it. But this is a remarkable event, I tell you. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. There was a man, Molan, I call him Molan, Baba Sa. I'm going to say it. And he has a very, very, very small house he had. I'm going to say it. So many children. I'm going to say it. Muslims have got so many children. I'm going to say it. My eldest sister has got eighteen children. I'm going to say it. 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 She had come to my house once a year in Belgium. I'm going to say it. So, this modern has got so many children. I'm going to say it. And I was sitting in front of that house. I'm going to say it. Night, maybe ten o'clock. I'm going to say it. And we, after this, we are allowed to go to the mosque to offer the light prayer. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Ten o'clock, nine. I'm going to say it. I'm hearing some loud noise. I'm going to say it. I got up. I'm going to say it. Started walking towards that. I'm going to say it. I'm very much conscious. I'm going to say it. I know what I'm doing. I'm going to say it. I know where, where I'm going. I'm going to say it. I do not know where I'm going. I'm going to say it. I'm just walking. I'm going to say it. I'm just walking. I'm going to say it. I'm walking. I'm going to say it. I'm coming to a place where these evangelists used to come and after the prayer, they swayed over there. I'm going to say it. I went there and stopped there. I'm going to say it. I did not know what made me to go there. I'm going to say it. I did not know what power led me to go there. I'm going to say it. Today, I know what power led me to go there. I'm going to say it. I know it was the spirit of the Lord leading me. I'm going to say it. So many ways the Lord was attracting me, that is what I would like to say. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. And we share the gospel with you, brother. I'm going to say it. Thank you, some track, brother. I'm going to say it. Leave me my brothers and sisters tonight. I'm going to say it. God starts working in the. I'm going to say it. One more incident, I would like to be. I'm going to say it. I was very small. I'm going to say it. I was, I was school in the village, only up to four standard village where school was there. I'm going to say it. School, now, now, classroom. And fifth, we have to go to another place called Yom Ke Hugli. Head ke hugli, I'm going to say it. Two mile distance. I'm going to say it. And we used to go from one village to the other village. I'm going to say it. And I remember I got a track. I'm going to say it. And that track was something long like this. I'm going to say it. It was folded. I'm going to say it. It was written in Canada. I'm going to say it. The other thing is, we know little bit Canada, but we are not through with Canada. I'm going to say it. So, but cannot, cannot read properly. I'm going to say it. I don't read that track properly. I'm going to say it. But there was photos in that track. I'm going to say it. There is a big valley. I'm going to say it. I laughed that somebody is coming, another photo, somebody is coming and jumping in the. I'm going to say it. And the third photo shows that he's, he's not able to swim and he's, you know, you know, beating his hands and legs, you know, struggling. I'm going to say it. And after the picture says people are advising to this, that, and all that. I'm going to say it. I love that somebody is jumping and lifting up. I'm going to say it. Who is doing this man and what is happening and what fact is talking, I did not understand. I'm going to say it. I got home. I'm going to say it. And I showed to my mother. I'm going to say it. You know what, suddenly my mother said. I'm going to say it. Home, let me try it. I'm going to say it. This is a Muslim. I'm going to say it. Yeah, let me, it could be. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. I got frightened. I'm going to say it. You know, Muslims keep the Quran on the top. Muslims, Quran, Quran. I took one, a steel stool and put this track there. I'm going to say it. 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 I kept the track of the Quran. I'm going to say it. And I believe today. I'm going to say it. It is the power of the track, Nuruddin Mullah, he is brought into the presence of God. I'm going to say it. 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 People might have been praying years together, Lord, they don't like in a track, touch there. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. You know what I'm saying? I'm going to say it. Your track, if you give you prayerfully, you'll never go in. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Some Nuruddin Mullah will come to the waters like a Jesus Christ. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. Many Nuruddin Mullahs are ready for you tonight. I'm going to say it. You're not preaching Nuruddin Mullahs. You're not preaching Mullahs. And I tell you, Mullahs will come, they will make you Mullah. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. But the fastest growing religion in America is Islam. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. You know, say is that we are in twenty twenty, half of the population will be Muslim population. I'm going to say it. Here is the point, Islam is the. Seven billion Muslim people are living on the globe today. I'm going to say it. Almost one half billion Muslims are. I'm going to say it. Almost every fifth person is a Muslim. I'm going to say it. But how much mission work is going on among Muslims? I'm going to say it. His priest says. Only one percent mission force. I'm going to say it. Nobody is going among them. I'm going to say it. I want you to pray for them. I'm going to say it. I want you to work for them. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. In Kerala, there is a saying like this. I'm going to say it. From Manikala to Adimali, we went by cycle in nineteen eighty-three. Eighty-three, we went in the, uh, Manikala, Adimali. Went by cycle, came by cycle. I'm going to say it. And then when Chanchen used to come to conduct open meeting. I'm going to say it. They are Muslim. I'm going to say it. Suddenly people, the boy team will say like this. I'm going to say it. Oh, Metamar, Kekatina. I'm going to say it. So therefore, nobody likes to preach to them. I'm going to say it. I met, you know, Bill Hybl, who is a famous teacher. I'm going to say it. He was, he came to Goa. And then his assistant came with him. I'm going to say it. When I was talking to that man. I'm going to say it. And he told me, I get frightened when I'm to share the gospel to the Muslims, therefore, I never say. I'm going to say it. Very, many Christians are like that. I'm going to say it. We need to stand up, sharing the gospel of the Lord Jesus. I'm going to say it. They also need Jesus. I'm going to say it. And I tell you, any community in the world, if they are need of the gospel, I would say, it is Muslims. I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. It is one of the dangerous philosophy of Islam. I'm going to say it. That's why, that's why we conducted a seminar called Love Muslim Seminar. I'm going to say it. I have a great desire to conduct a seminar for the young boys and adults who want to understand Islam and reach them with the love of the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm going to say it. So if you can think of that, I will be happy about that, please. I'm going to say it. I accepted the Lord Jesus Christ. I'm going to say it. And I went to Kerala. I'm going to say it. And I, I went to a place for a party. And from there, I came to Manikala. I'm going to say it. And after one year. I'm going to say it. One brother told me, I'd like to pray with him. I'm going to say it. He was senior to me. I'm going to say it. He knew that I was suffering by that sickness. I'm going to say it. After going to Kerala, my sickness increased. I'm going to say it. And faith started going down. I'm going to say it. And I was confused again. I'm going to say it. This brother came and prayed for me. He's a holy guy. One night, he prayed for me. I'm going to say it. That night, Jesus miraculously healed. I'm going to say it. Something without sickness, four years. I'm going to say it. And I got healed. I'm going to say it. I, I was jumping, living in dormitory of the Bible college. I'm going to say it. I said, I'm healed, I'm healed, I'm healed. I'm going to say it. Jesus is a healer. I'm going to say it. He heals us. I'm going to say it. I'm going to pray for the sick people. I'm going to say it. Pray for the people who are suffering in their body sickness. I'm going to say it. I believe, Lord, Jesus is our healer. I'm going to say it. My story is big. I'm going to say it. And my graduation time came. I'm going to say it. Doctor Bully there, this boy came to Manikala. Doctor Bully there, the person who. And he told me. There is a Muslim convert girl and we are looking for a boy for her, would you like to marry her? I'm going to say it. After some time. I got another brother, another pastor of Sharod Fellowship from Kottarakara came and told me that there is a Muslim convert girl, would you like to marry? I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it. It's not one, two now. I'm going to say it. After some times from Chengra Shiri, another proposal. I'm going to say it. And she is also Muslim. She also has ran away from house. She is suffering very bad. I'm going to say it. It's not one. I'm going to say it. It's not two. I'm going to say it. Three.[1042.42]
Just two, three years before I Last sixteen years he was worshiping with us. Two years before we gave a call. And I was hearing what is talking going on by the other phone, a parallel phone. And suddenly, in the house, they call it Jumi, they call her Jumi. And suddenly, she asked, "Ammah, Amma", they did not recognize first. Then she said it is Jumi talking. Suddenly, they said, they recognized the doctor is talking. What mother said? The wound is dried, don't feel it again. You are not our doctor anymore. She put down that. We always remember one thing. The Lord has said, live one father and one mother. Hundreds of parents. No one has blessed so many things. Even today, there was seven years, seven days she was locked up in a house. And you know, her younger brother, younger brother used to give food from the window. Testament was circulated by Cassid, by somebody long years before. She, she has served the Lord in Kerala for a long time. We came to, we came to our old place. And we started a church over there. And four, five years, we didn't have any believers. And now we are struggling. You know that Kerala has got convention, every year we have to go to Kerala. Every year I used to go there. People used to ask. We are the part of an organization called New India Chachagon. And the people used to ask. How many people got that twice? I used to say like this. I used to always say like this. I would only answer, "I have been gassed every day." Five years. But after some time, one man from Tamil Nadu came. So we, we had some prayer together. And after that, we conducted a small convention. Seven people got popped out. And after that, the church has started. Became twenty-five people. Became fifty. Became hundred. Today, we have four hundred people coming and worshiping. We believe that we are going to have thousand people within five years. We have laid a foundation for a church building. That foundation for the church building, we are building a church for a hundred, a thousand, the Kedda City Church. We are building a church forty-five to ninety-five. I have made the fond, we have made the foundation for that. And I want you to pray for that. I was coming to America. At that time, I rang to Tabi Chan, who is the president of our organization. And I told him, "I am going to America." And he told me, "Malyaran like this." He said, "Daani, amble poit, a, kadichal, pikaad, kadichal, pikaad." "Kadichal, potaattan, nindhe, tiyaoji, patthu pointe, na, paseng kyaade." "When you go there, don't preach your temple of thiyaoji." "Nee amble poit, i, patthu pointe, paseng kyaade, thaar, gottita, nal, kashkund, varamo." "Aa, ki, varam, nimmaloda, parisimai, ya, my character." "You go there, you don't preach your temple of thiyaoji, all you need to do is, just give them a burden of the ministry here, and you come back, God will take care of this." "But I, but I do have a satisfaction, I must have peace at that point." "I will take little time now." "So I want you to listen carefully." "If I, if I say kyaade, na, nittiyaa, kothai minna, trivandra more, ticket, pataa, yala, 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 yala." "If I preach this message, it will be just like if I take a ticket, from hotel to hotel, and I get up in Pama." "Oh, Lord, there's a lot of process in that." "I know, I know, I, I, I do like that, and some preacher say to me, I also do like that in Kerala, I act so young as a Malak Masala." "I'm glad to take your attention to the word of God." "I want to take at least half another, are you happy with me?" "Yeah, is it okay?" "Is it okay?" "Is it okay?" "Can I get a loud Hallelujah?" "Can I get one more loud Hallelujah?" "Hallelujah!" "Yes, Allah, they, they, they..." 24 to 27. From this, I would like to bring to you a small message this evening. Mark, 24 of March chapter nine, verse 14 to 27. You know the story that passed. And a father is coming to the Lord Jesus Christ. And you know that, he's bringing his sixth son to the disciples of Jesus. And they are praying, and he is not here. There are two verses I want you to read, please. Number one, verse 18, verse 18. That father is coming and saying to the disciples, Jesus like this. He is coming and saying to the Lord Jesus Christ. "I asked your disciple to try out the spirit from my son, but they could not do that." "I brought my son sick." "And he is a sickest." "I'm taking him as a sick man." "Discouraging word coming from, from a mouth of a father." "Let's go to the verse 28 now." "Disciples are coming and telling Jesus Christ." "Why we could not try out that demon?" "All waters, waters outside, waters." "They are very discouraging words." "All we could not do." "Today, the title of my message is this." "Please, for the favor." "All we say in our lives." "I learned so many lessons by my failures in my life." "I learned the things in my life." "And I'm learning in my life." "Things happen in our lives." "They lead us to the feliva." "Felivas may come in our eyes." "But those of felivas never make us a man of feliva." "And I will talk to you nine remarkable truths tonight." "Very simple." "And you all know about that." "What we say in our lives." "Why they could not heal their child?" "Why they are not able to perform them like that?" "Some of the questions comes in our hearts like that." "Oh, Lord, why?" "Why the feliva?" "I pray." "I pray." "I pray." "I thank God." "What I could not do." "Nine reasons." "Why they fit." "Nine remarkable truths." "Number one, let's go, go to the verse 19." "I, I, verse 16, please." "I call it, lack of mutual agreement." "When Jesus comes down from the top of the mob, then..." "Verse 16, he's asking like this." "What are you arguing with these pharisies and Sadducees?" "What you are arguing?" "The sickness the disciple had in the life was..." "They were arguing." "Arguing, people are, they will never agree." "So their arguing never brings agreement." "If there is agreement, God's blessing never comes in our hearts." "We need agreement." "Jesus said like this." "Two official agreements." "Anything you ask." "We need to, we need to agree." "Nobody is respecting agreement from our hearts." "They are a hard joint together." "I will say, in action, the opposite like this." "They are in one mind." "They are in one place." "They are in one heart." "They are in one community." "They join in one place." "We have one community called, Patti Kostha." "But we do not, we don't have an agreement of one mind." "We do not have an agreement." "As I said yesterday, thithiranaatra." "We all are scattered." "My son had a sickness called, rheumatic arthritis." "Doctor told me about a sickness like this." "It licks the knees, but bites the heart." "Rheumatic arthritis, it licks the knees and bites the heart, children get the heart attack." "And you know, I used to go to convention, preach, healing and all that." "I used to feel in my heart like this." "I'm calling many people for the healing." "My son is a sick thing." "I remember one day, about agreement, I read somewhere in the magazine." "At that time, we were there in a place called, Rukminaga." "And I held the hand and started praying." "Our convention is going to come in Belga." "Lord, you bring the healing, Lord." "Heal my son, Lord." "This is what we together pray." "There was a convention after that." "I was a translator in that convention." "After the convention." "My son comes and tells to my wife." "I heard in Kerala that Jesus is telling me that I am healed." "He comes and tells me also." "And I could not believe that." "He was maybe simply saying." "There is a famous Chinese specialist called, Vidi Party in Belga." "And I took that child to him." "I mean the child." "And he had to, the same doctor has told, forty years, the child has to take an injection, every twenty-one days, called, Penadura injection." "And after checking, the doctor says..." "Need not have to take that." "Oh, please, healing." "Therefore, today I am going to pray for him tonight." "Agree in prayer." "Lack of mutual agreement." "Number two, lack of needed faith." "Was nineteen Jesus say like this." "Unbelieving generation." "Oh, unbelieving generation." "He's not talking about people." "He's talking about generation." "Father is unbeliever." "Son is unbeliever." "Grandson is unbeliever." "Unbelieving generation." "He was unhappy with them." "So therefore, they were having no faith in the law." "We need faith in them." "Hallelujah." "That's why we call believers." "You know what is meant by Muslims?" "Muslim means believer."
unknowingly unknowingly the faith comes to your house.
Anything you know.
When I go to the city people will be here.
Some people, some people.
And Jesus, Paul says about a late man was sitting there on the roadside.
Responsibility
तुम्हारी उत्तर देख रहे हो
जॉन्सी मैक्सवेल्स इस लाइक थिस
जॉन्सी मैक्सवेल्स नहीं है
My age here, where the maturity doesn't come.
नमक प्राय भी नहीं पकड़ा गया
Maturity comes by responsibility.
एन नमक पकड़ा गया तो देख रहे हो उत्तर आता था
If you are natural, we get responsible.
नमक पकड़ा गया तो उत्तर आता था
So we need to become irresponsible.
नमक उत्तर आता था
I need to do that, not somebody else.
वे नहीं चेहरा
Not somebody else.
वे नहीं चेहरा
I'm going to do that. You should become a man, woman of responsibility.
उत्तर आता था सहोदी सहोदी बना रहा हूँ
Lack of required responsibility was missing in the life of the savior.
अब जीवन तो ना करना शिक्षा में जीवन उत्तर आता इलाज इलाज
We have a four.
नारात्मक गायब
Was twenty-one and nineteen.
जीवन तो उन पकड़ा गया
I call it lack of effective communication.
आश्विनी ने रखा था बोया
Yes, sometimes we do not have a communication.
अब तो आश्विनी ने रखा था बोया
If there's no communication, lot of problems.
नमक आश्विनी इलाज बोया उत्तर आता था
You know what Jesus is doing there?
ऐश्वर्या चेहरा
He's calling that father.
अभी भी चेहरा
And he's talking with them.
ऐश्वर्या सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
How long he must stay?
नहीं नहीं
What was the reason for this?
सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
Keep on talking.
ऐश्वर्या सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
Talking is important.
सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
But there are some people who are talking.
अब तो अभी तो सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
Talking, talking, talking.
उत्तर अच्छा चेहरा
And spoiling.
अभी उत्तर सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
There are some people who only talk, never listen.
वे नहीं सबसे अच्छा चेहरा बात रही थी
One day my son was telling like this.
वो एक ब्रश देख रहे हैं
Papa, you being a preacher only know how to talk, you have never learned how to listen.
एन बार पपा तारे प्रसिद्ध रहा है प्रसिद्ध बात रही थी तो कहता था
I said, yes, Daddy, I've learned listening.
ना बारे में शिक्षा चेहरा ये कहता
Sometimes when we speak, we speak, only never listen.
अब तो सबसे अच्छा चेहरा बात रहा है तो कहता
We need to listen.
नमक कहता था
Communication means we talk and somebody listens.
कम्युनिकेशन अब तो नहीं है आश्विनी ने नाम सबसे अच्छा चेहरा वे तो कहता था अब भी नाम कहता था
So we need to talk each other.
नमक कहता था
I heard a story of a wife and husband.
वो भाई बता रहा था
Because they were talking too much.
अब उत्तर सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
Fight was taking place.
तो कुछ बात चला
At one day decided like this.
वो एक ब्रश अच्छा चेहरा
Because we are talking too much, let's not talk.
अब उत्तर सबसे अच्छा चेहरा तो नहीं है उत्तर चेहरा नहीं है
And so let us put down everything, whatever we want to do in writing.
नमक आश्विनी ने रखा था एल्वा नाम
So what can I do if we will do that?
एल्वा एल्वा सबसे अच्छा
So I started doing like that.
एल्वा एल्वा
One day when you want to enter, they used to write.
अब आश्विनी ने रखा था एल्वा
My one day husband wrote to the wife.
वो भाई बता रहे हैं
Early morning tomorrow, I have to go five o'clock.
अंजिमा के नारे नहीं किया
Please awake me.
एन एल्वा एल्वा पिकना
By the time we got up, it was seven o'clock.
एल्वा 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 एल्वा
Come on, my wife did not awake me.
एन भाई एल्वा पिकना
And he went to the table and saw that little piece of paper.
अब तो पेपर नहीं है
And the backside she has written, now it is five o'clock, please get up.
अब तारे एल्वा चेहरा पेपर ना भर भाग तो भाई नहीं चेहरा अच्छा ना अंजिमा नहीं आए एल्वा
Lack of communication creates the problem.
आश्विनी ने मिला बोया शिक्षा में
So Jesus was a good communicator.
ऐश्वर्या ने रखा था आश्विनी
Jonsi Maxwell has written a good book on communication.
जॉन्सी मैक्सवेल्स ने नहीं रहा से कम्युनिकेशन नहीं रहा
One of the best communicators the world has ever seen is our brother Jesus.
ऐश्वर्या ने कहा था एक तो गलत आश्विनी ने रखा था
When he communicated, he brought the miracle.
तारे सबसे अच्छा चेहरा बोला था
Healthy communication.
नमक आरोग्य बना रहा है
Good communication.
ना समाप्त
So we need to have a good communication.
नमक ना समाप्त
They did not have a communication.
अब तो कम्युनिकेशन समाप्त
Then you go to a sick person.
रोगी ने तो बोला
Preach to sick person.
रोगी ने तो पसीना
We always talk to that person.
ना रोगी ने तो उत्तर अच्छा चेहरा
No, we don't listen to that person.
नमक रोगी ने बात रही थी
Listen to that person.
रोगी ने बात रही थी
What is your problem?
एक ब्रश में ना
How life is going on?
जीवन बिगड़े
What is this problem?
एक ब्रश में ना
Jesus was only questioning and hearing the answers.
ऐश्वर्या ने चोटी ने चोटी चेहरा अब तो कहता
By hearing, he brought the healing.
अब कहता था ऐश्वर्या अल्प
Healing comes by hearing.
नमक कहता था अल्प
So therefore, when we hear the ail ail the ailment of somebody or pain of somebody, unknowingly, unknowingly, we are bringing healing in the life.
अब कहता था चेहरा तो बोल अभी वारी आने दिन अब समझ गया
So therefore, lack of communication was the another problem I understand.
ब्रश में ना अब आश्विनी ने
Number five, lack of motivational message.
अब उत्तेजित करने दे रहा है वो समझ
Jesus gave a motivational message.
ऐश्वर्या ने उत्तेजित किया
This doesn't come just like that.
समझ गया
It comes by the motivational message.
ना उत्तेजित करना यार बजा नहीं दिया अब समझ गया
It was twenty-three, Jesus is saying like this.
एक ब्रश ना बात करना
If you can, everything is possible for him who believes.
विश्व सिग्नल इलाज साथ ही
He gave a message of faith.
ऐश्वर्या विश्वास और समझ
So we need to believe and he gave a motivational message.
अब विश्व सिग्नल समझ
And he created faith.
ऐश्वर्या ने विश्वास दिया
And he was ready to be healed.
अब समझ गया
A miracle was a
अब अल्प
We need to give him motivation.
अब उत्तेजित किया समझ
Motivate the other people.
ब्रश ने उत्तेजित किया
Encourage the other people.
ब्रश ने उत्तेजित किया
And we encourage people.
नमक ब्रश ने उत्तेजित
Oh, I tell you that miracle will take
अब ऐश्वर्या ने
Sometimes we don't encourage.
नमक उत्तेजित किया
You know, you know about the white people?
बिल्ला का रुचि ना
Because you are living among white people.
अब बिल्ला का रुचि ना
I have learned one thing from them.
अब तो
Always they encourage.
अब कुछ उत्तेजित
Hey, you look good.
एन करने बोला
Oh, your 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 dress is good.
अब बस
Your back shirt is good.
अब पैन चढ़ा ना भर दिया
We are exactly like them.
नमक ने एक खरगोर दिया
That's all, then, then, then
And we see people, we say, what happened to you today?
Then, 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 then
Yeah, okay, okay today?
That man said, "Sukonda, Sukonda." That man is saying, "Sukonda."
The man said, "I'm okay."
Saying, "Sukonda."
रेडी ने बोला, "Are you all okay?"
That fellow will do that maybe or maybe having sickness.
अब तो आश्विनी ने बोला एक ब्रश ना बोल
In the tone, in our mind, it have whining, then it
I feel like the whining of our mind is totally misconstrued.
एन अल्लाह एक ही थी
नमक ब्रश बेबी थिक बोल एक ब्रश
You know, the children, Malayali children who are born here.
इबे चेहरे चप्पल है
Very strict.
अब वाला ने सबसे अच्छा चेहरा
They are sincere.
अब वाला सिंसियर
I know very much at that point. Many people have asked about that.
ना बारे में परंपरा
They are very strict.
अब वाला ने
Very sincere.
वाला सिंसियर
But we are not like
नमक ने
Then you get a करते चिट्टी
नमक एक ब्रश बेबी हियर समथिंग बिल्ली ठीक ओवर बियो
Oh, brain, our brain is troubled brain.
नमक मनसे वाले किस्तम आई दी
We need to have a simple brain.
नमक वाला सर्व
Oh, we need to be the encouraging people.
नमक ब्रश ने उत्तेजित
Hey, brother, you are good.
नमक ने सर्व
Hey, sister, you are good.
नमक
You look beautiful.
नमक
You look handsome.
नमक सुधर
But don't tell to everybody, I have beauty.
एन ब्रश ने
So what I'm trying to say is, give him motivational message.
अब उत्तेजित किया समझ
Sixth one here. Let's go to verse twenty-five.
एक ब्रश बाकी
I call it lack of spiritual authority.
हां भी बोया वो शक्ति
The reason we fail in our lives because we lack the spiritual authority.
हां भी बोया ठीक नहीं परंपरा
Look to verse twenty-five, what the Lord Jesus is saying.
एक ब्रश
You don't have your respect.
नी चेहरे का
I am coming, coming.
इन तो बोल
That talks me, the spiritual authority.
नमक वाइट ने हां भी बोया
We need to have a spiritual authority.
हां भी बोया
Jesus said like this.
ऐश्वर्या ने
All authority which is in me, I will give to you.
एक ब्रश ने ठीक नहीं
It is not only for Rosatane.
इट नॉट ली फटोस
It is for every achan.
एल्लाह चाहता
It's for every aamma.
एल्लाह
It is for everybody. You are a man and woman of authority.
एल्लाह
We need to exercise the
नमक ठीक नहीं
We need the spiritual
हां आपनी हाथी
Ephesians chapter two says like this.
एक ब्रश
We are seated in the heavenly places.
नमक ब्रश ने सोर्गी स्तान
Five times a mile is talking about that.
जिन्होंने
What it is talking?
एक
Talking about the spiritual authority that we have.
एक ब्रश ने आपनी हाथी
He talks about the spiritual
एक ब्रश हां भी बोया पकड़ी अभी
We have to experience that in our lives.
अब तो जीवन तो
Number seven. The other days, it was nine.
एक ब्रश
This time, I think it was ninety. It doesn't come without twenty-five. Other than the prayer, it doesn't come.
रात्रि लाले ये जागी मारी
Lack of personal prayer.
एक ब्रश ने प्रात्रि
Sometimes we have a congregational prayer.
नमक उत्तर ने
Sometimes we have a convention prayer.
नमक कम्युनिकेशन
Sometimes we have a public prayer.
नमक पर्सनल प्रात्रि
Lack the personal prayer.
एक ब्रश ने
I have remembered whenever we have a lack of personal prayer.
एक ब्रश ने प्रात्रि चेहरा
Who the famous
नमक जीवन तो अब तो
Whenever the people do not come in our church.
जे जे सब
Suddenly we start praying.
नमक प्रात्रि
I tell my team like this.
एक ब्रश
When the people are less in our church.
जे जे आकर
Saturday we start praying.
प्रात्रि
One day was even Saturday, we have got a strong personal prayer.
एक ब्रश ने चेहरा बोला प्रात्रि
I have seen that Sunday, lot of people come.
ना चेहरा ने था ना साले
Personal prayer.
विक्टर में प्रात्रि
Jesus has prayed personally.
ऐश्वर्या विक्टर में प्रात्रि
Nine different prayers are there in Gospel of Luke.
लुक लुक असुश्चित नमक प्रात्रि
All personal prayer.
विक्टर में प्रात्रि
So we need to have a personal
विक्टर में प्रात्रि
That is what God is expecting.
नमक ने
And I keep warning Lack of spiritual Christian purity.
नमक इलाज बोला था भी बोया शुभ
That is there in Matthew chapter seventeen, seventeen.
अब तो शिक्षा
Oh, unbelieving, perverse generation.
अब विश्व सिग्नल तेल तीन बोया
Vicky
दुष्ट
We need purity.
नमक शुभ
I was with a pastor called Pastor Barry Silverbuck back in Papua New Guinea for two years.
एक ब्रश पपा ने गिरे गए
I have learned one lesson from that great man of God.
नमक ने या रोशन साथ ही
Purity brings healing.
एक ब्रश पपा के पपीता ने अब समझ
Purity brings power.
एक ब्रश ने अब शक्ति
Therefore I put the gem says like this.
अब तो यकूर
Prayer of a righteous man, available much.
अब नी बोया प्रात्रि वाला परंपरा
Righteous living.
नी वो चिविक
What is righteous living?
नी वो चिविक ने
Rightly.
नमक चिविक
Don't live wrong.
तेता चिविक
Rightly, correctly.
एन चिविक
You have to go this way.
एन ब्रश
Don't climb on this and walk here.
अब तो बोल नी तो
Like that is righteous.
एन ब्रश
That's why Paul say, yes.
ना पोरस
I think maybe in the voting chap of the Book of Romans must be.
नमक
What is the kingdom of God?
एक ब्रश ने
It's not eating and drinking.
अब आना
Living in righteousness.
नी चिविक
You are, I need to live in righteousness.
नी चिविक
That is what all these Living in righteousness.
नी वो चिविक
So lack of Christian purity was that.
जीवन तो शुभ ने मिला बोला
Finally.
अवसर
Last one.
अवसर
Lack of self-realization.
नमक खुद चितने अब अल्प मिला बोला तो
And that realization is coming in verse twenty-eight.
जीवन तो ना कर
Why we could not do that?
एक ब्रश ने
Why we fail?
एक ब्रश ने
We could not in this election, oh, we should be, why?
नी यक्षित बिल्ली ने जीवन तो
We did not win, why?
एक ब्रश ने
We need to have a self-realization.
नमक तो बे वो स्वयं परिशोध ने
We examine everybody.
नमक तो वो शोध
We examine everybody.
नमक ने शोध
We examine everybody.
नमक ने
We don't examine ourselves.
नमक ने
But the problem is.
शोध
The Bible says we need to examine ourselves.
नमक ने नमक ने
When we are taking large table.
एक ब्रश ने
Suddenly we say, we look to the other people.
नमक ने
अनकल चितना रत्न
अब तो He drinks and he's
We examine other people.
नमक ब्रश ने
We don't examine
नमक ने
We need to examine
नमक ने शोध
We need to examine us.
नमक ने
Examine us.
नमक ने
There I have faith.
ना ब्रश ने
That is my
एक ब्रश ने
When we start realizing ourselves.
नमक ने अब रोशन
I have sincerely learned one thing.
एक ब्रश ने
We don't criticize other people.
नमक ब्रश ने
So our criticism, the height of criticism comes down.
नमक ने अब कुच्चा कुच्चा ने विडियो
So therefore, we need to realize ourselves.
नमक तो
So it's always my mistake.
एक ब्रश ने
Why the miracle is not taking place?
एक ब्रश ने चिविक ने
Why the things are not happening?
एक ब्रश ने चिविक ने
Why?
एक ब्रश
Self-realization.
नमक ने
Nine, two, three.
यात्री ने साथ ही
Number one. Lack of mutual agreement.
एक ब्रश ने
Number two. Lack of needed
विश्व सिग्नल
Number three.
एक ब्रश ने
Lack of required responsibility.
नमक ने तड़िया ने
Lack of effective communication.
नमक ने आश्विनी ने बोला
Number five, lack of motivational message.
एक ब्रश ने समझ
Say, I have a lack of spiritual authority.
हां भी बोया ठीक नहीं
Number seven. Lack of personal prayer.
नमक विक्टर ने